Wednesday, October 19th. It is the seven o'clock hour and I'm going to call to order this special meeting of the Town of Dalton. Before we get started, Mr. Diver.
I just want to say thank you to Dalton's Cub Skull PAC 42. They had reached out a couple of weeks ago to learn more about town government, so we spent a good half hour with the kids tonight. So, thank you to their PAC and they're going to present the flag for our pledge of allegiance. So, on down to it.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, boys. Joining me tonight at the front is Heather Hunt, our town clerk, members of the Select Board, Daniel Esco, Mark Strout, Robert Bishop, Joe Diver, our chairman, and Tom Hutcherson, who is our town manager. To my left is William Josheen, chairman of the Finance Committee, and Jeff Noble. For the record, this meeting will be recorded as it always is. Please note that you are being recorded. If you wish to address the assembly, please raise your hand and everybody will be called on in due course. Please identify yourself for the record when you do that. First matter before this assembly is a waiver of the official reading of the town warrant. Oh, I don't have to read the thing in bulk. We have such a motion. It was your second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Article one, to see if the town will approve that the Central Berkshire Regional School District appropriate $900,000 for the purpose of repair and/or replacement of the Wacona Regional High School track located at 150 Old Windsor Road, Dalton, Mass., including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, said sum to be expended at the discretion of the Wacona School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended or to take any other action in relation to it. I move that the town approve that the Central Berkshire Regional School District appropriate $900,000 for the purpose of repair and/or replacement of the Wacona Regional High School track located at 150 Old Dalton Road, Dalton, Mass. Including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, said sum to be expended at the direction of the Wacona School Building Committee. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 71, Section 16D of the General Laws and the District Agreement as amended. Second. They're moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Josheen.
I move that Article one been voted by secret ballot.
Second. The motion to vote by secret ballot has been moved in seconded. That's a debatable motion. Is there any debate on that motion? Here we now seeing then, all in favor of secret ballot on Article one signify by saying aye, opposed by saying no. Thank you. That's majority. All right. Now, back to the article. Is there any discussion on the article? In the back. Sure.
I live at 92 Raymond Drive, Dalton, Mass. I speak to you tonight as a citizen, parent, physical wellness teacher, and content coordinator for the school district, member of the building committee, former Wacona Track and Field boys coach, and the cross-country running coach for 11 years. I'm also a certified track and field official who has taken a leave of absence to raise my family. Our track is used on a daily basis by both students, athletes, and the general public. As an example, track and field is a sport that allows for the opportunity for all to compete, not just the elite. If you come to the track on any given meet, you'll find the cream of the crop as well of those just starting on their journey to wellness and competition. It's not just about the competition, it's about the life lessons learned and being part of a team, doing something good for not only your physical well-being but also your social and emotional well-being and development. Upwards of 150 student-athletes take place at a simple dual meet alone, not to mention all of the youths by Nescus and Wacona during school days, any chance we have to be out there. The general public and camps utilize this facility over the summer months as well. Resurfacing the track is integral for our students, future students, families, and the community as a whole. While many believe that the district has completely neglected the track over the years, this is simply not the case. In the 2007-2008 school year, while I was coaching, the district did have the track inspected as the last resurfacing had taken place around 2001. At that time, it was advised that the district to spend between $15,000 and $20,000 to have specific areas of the track patched and the entire track restripped, which they did. Had this not been done, we would not be able to use the track at this time. As a member of the building committee, we did discuss the building, the condition of the track during feasibility study and during several committee meetings. And please remember, those meetings now date back as far as six years. We knew the track would need attention of some sort in the near future, but at the time, we truly felt the building was of utmost importance rather than adding renovations to existing amenities. However, now that this project is $2 million under budget, we have the opportunity to provide the much-needed upgrades that our students, families, and community as a whole both need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dalton, I also serve as the athletic director for the last eight years and have been a district employee for about 20 years. I have a prepared statement, but I'm not going to, I'm going to try not to duplicate some of the things that Carrie had said. I'm here today because I'm asking everyone to think of a new track. Unfortunately, the building project four or five years ago, but was decided not to be in the original design due to keeping the scope of the project down and in an effort to keep costs down. We are now sitting $2 million under budget for the school project due to all of the cost-cutting measures that were taken in order to deliver a state-of-the-art building while being fiscally responsible, which was the charge of the building committee and they did an excellent job. Our track is in fact in desperate need of replacement. It has not been resurfaced, as Carrie had mentioned, in quite some time, but has had work done over the years. This is the first time in school history that we're asking the towns and taxpayers to support a project of this size on the track, given the age and condition it needs a full replacement that is estimated at $750,000 with the additional $150 to be for contingency. Having this track has allowed us to do the following: run a vibrant and large track and field program that currently services 40 to 80 kids per year in all of our towns. We are also a desired event to host all track meets in addition to other athletic events. Our school runs a vibrant and large unified track and field program that is quite frankly the gold standard in the state of Massachusetts. For those that aren't aware, Unified Track supports students with and without disabilities. It is the most accessible sport in our school, the most accessible program in our school, and has quite frankly been recognized by the state. Not having an accessible or safe track is going to deny this group of students the opportunity to fully participate in athletics. We run a growing and dedicated cross-and-country program that uses that track and their finish line into training throughout the year, including today. We are running and growing a successful Nordic ski program that services 30 to 40 kids per year and is one of the best programs in the state as of last year. It's used for PE for both Nescus and Wacona, for every single student in the building from all of our towns and school choice students, as Carrie had mentioned. It also allows unrestricted access to the community, which is used almost daily by people in the community on a regular basis. Before the football game last Friday night, there were people from the community just walking the track, ready to go, and left before the football game started. It's also allowed us to host a number of events like the buddy games in the Berkshires. As an ADI, responsibility along with our central office administration to make responsible decisions. If we do not replace this track, it will be shut down in the very near future due to safety and liability reasons. This is not a scare tactic, but a reality that we are facing due to the condition of the track. If a new track is not going to be replaced or built, we are going to need to rethink how we do this. We're going to need to bus our kids to other schools and rent track space at other places because we're just not going to end the track program. A new track is not a want, it's a necessity, and I ask everybody to fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Where? Thank you. In the back? Yes, I'm sorry.
Joseph Albino, 609 South Street, Dalton. Can you hold for a mic, please?
As this reads, "including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto", will this allow the building committee to also improve all of the other parts besides just the surface of the track? Shot put circles, javelin area, high jump, long jump areas, because those things are also a major, obviously, part of competition. There's 17 events in a track meet and the venue needs to be updated all across the board. Will they be able to spend this money to improve the entire facility or are they only restricted to resurfacing the track? That's my question.
Thank you. Mr. Diver.
If I understand correctly from a school committee meeting through Mr. Rich Peters is that those other surfaces, the javelin, the high jump area, are part of this project. I think what is excluded, if you look at that track area, are probably bleachers and the other cement areas in that walkway. I think it's just that track. I'll turn to the superintendent to confirm. She's giving me a thumbs up, so that's a good sign. So, that's that particular answer. So, thank you for that question. So, those pieces are in scope of the request.
Anyone else? Mr. Josheen.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, I'm the chair of the Finance Committee of the Town of Dalton. And at our meeting last Wednesday, the Finance Committee looked very long at this article. And we talked at length about how it was going to cost the taxpayers and how long the taxpayers were going to have to pay for this track. And we also talked about other ways of funding this track. And as I understand, there hasn't been any look at other ways of funding it. As it stands right now, if this is approved, this entire project ends up on the tax rate. And in the Town of Dalton, that amounts to about $43,000 per year. At the end of the life expectancy, it's around $1.2 million roughly. And those are rough numbers only because I didn't sit and take the time to figure out the pennies. So, the committee, we had seven against and one for when we voted for this. So, it wasn't unanimous. So, there was a level of support. Granted, it was low, but we're thinking of the taxpayers of the Town of Dalton and how the taxpayers have to figure out how to fund this. We're thinking of people that simply don't have the money. This could be, I sat, figured it out. It's around 10 cents on the tax rate roughly. That doesn't, for a median-priced house in Dalton, that amounts to somewhere around $75 a year, but others' houses, it's much more. But in some cases, that could be a prescription for an elderly person or something of that nature, especially when we know or know to some degree that we can manage to come up with other ways to fund this. It seems to me that we have this small amount of money that's available to us from this building and building this building that, in my opinion, and I believe I speak for the entire committee, that should go back to the taxpayers and then let the taxpayers decide later on at what level we need to have engineering done and review of this track to make this facility a state-of-the-art track, as has been so eloquently spoken about. Let's do the level of engineering that needs to be done. Let's do our due diligence instead of having people come and look at it and not providing some level of engineering. As I understand it, we would, if we were deluded into this project, we would get some savings with a project, with the savings of the cost of a project engineer, but there would be no savings when it comes down to the cost of engineering. So, that has to be taken into account when it comes to putting this project together. And at this point, I would advocate a no vote for this, only because we, not because, not because I don't want us to have a track, a good track, but I want us, for the taxpayers in the Town of Dalton, to do our due diligence and let's get a state-of-the-art place up there for hopefully much less cost with due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Right there. Oh, no, it's coming. I'm sorry.
I'm Tom Irwin. I live at 54 Central Avenue in Dalton. Mr. Josheen, maybe you could compare the $900,000 for a quarter-mile track to what it costs to pave Dalton Division Road? Share with us how much that was, please.
Dalton Division Road is approximately one and a half miles long. It cost us just to have it milled and filled recently. It cost us around $300,000. So, that's where I'm at and that's why, that's why we're where we at on the Finance Committee. Because we know what it costs to do a mile and a half of road, we're talking about trying to do a quarter of a mile of track for $750,000. Something doesn't kind of add up when it comes down to that. So, at some point or in some place, there happens to be a lack, in my opinion, of study. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Diver.
The one thing I prepared this night, which tonight is just some other data points, and what you'll see from me is that I won't take a vote either way because I believe it's your decision at the end of the day. On the Dalton Division Road, the 300K was supported by ARPA funds, so it did not come from our tax rolls. It came from the federal government through ARPA funds. The tax impact for the track, and this is just data from our town accountant, Senator Albano, is the tax from FY '22 to FY '23 increased 1.8% or estimated $88 per household. Add in the track, and this isn't the new school taxes, this is just the track, the average bill will go up to $103. So, the difference between the $103 and $88 is what the tax will be for the track for 22 years. And that's okay. It's an investment, but that's a decision that residents voters will need to make on that investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Paxton Strout and I live at 31 Hemlock Hill in Dalton. I graduated in 2021 from Wacona and I ran cross-country for four years and I was on the Unified Track Team for one year. I have so many friends from the Unified Track Team who still talk about how amazing that time of their life was. It changed people's lives for the better. I believe that the new track can help students find joy in this program like I did and my classmates did. Getting rid of the track would just totally uproot people's routines and it would just change programs and that's just, I don't think that's okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Over here. Yes.
I'll be very brief. I'm Principal Rob, 276 North Street, Dalton. We also have a little bit of comparison of track to road. We're not building a road, we're building a track. This is a track that kids run on and compete on. Their ACLs, their MCLs, their hamstrings depend on whether or not we have a quality track. We have kids that wear track shoes that if they were to hit a piece of bare pavement, they could blow out their knee, they could blow out their ankle. It's common sense that we have a high-quality track, just like we're going to have a high-quality baseball field right next door. The other thing is, that I just want to say is I appreciate the number of people that are here tonight. Strong communities support strong schools, they support strong programs, and I trust that everyone will do the right thing tonight through their tax base. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, and I really echo Principal Rob's sentiment that we really appreciate your being here tonight and your support for our learners and our community really is everything. A couple of things I just wanted to say is, right now, because we are still part of the MSBA project, we are not able to take donations. Any donations we would take that would be part of this project would be subtracted from the funds that we are reimbursed through MSBA. So, I did want to say that. The other thing is, it is very difficult to procure grant funding for tracks. We have looked into it, but again, at this time, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't potentially in the future, at this time, we're really bound by the guidelines that we are held to through the MSBA. The other thing I just wanted to mention is where we are right now with this building project is we're sitting at about $70 million. The original proposal was about $72 million. We went out to bond for 80% of the project. We had a very low interest rate, just under 2%. And the difference between the track that, moving forward with this track and not, really means, we have not gone out yet to bond for the last 20%. So, the difference would really be whether we go out to bond for $70 million, which is without the track, or $71 million, which would be with the track. So, I just wanted to say that component as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Diver.
Just to clarify that, if the school was, if the school committee was to decide not to propose a track now but wait, donations could come in, which could lower the tax cost for residents. Is that?
The other data points, I think one of the responsibilities I have as chair and our town manager has is to provide clarity. I love the attendance, but this same attendance doesn't attend select board meetings all the time and there's a lot going on. So, just to list a few things real quick for transparency, we passed a town hall renovation at $685,000. Walker Brook at a last select board meeting, we just had our report, and that's going to be between $4 and $5 million, but we're going to go after grant money, which will lower our cost somewhere between 1 to 1.2. We got a report on ADA compliance for our town hall. We're really behind on that. We don't know what that's going to cost, but roughly 60 to 70% will come through grant money to address those issues. We have ARPA funds and we've already invested some of those ARPA funds, and that's not tax money. That's the money that comes in from the Fed. And then, I think everybody heard about our road issues and the recent street scan that we did, that 80-plus percent of our roads need repair. And with the state funding for road conditions is extremely low, how do we quickly repair roads as well? Maybe, maybe the fair share amendment passes and there's more dollars for roads, but who knows? So, I want to provide that transparency. Again, I rely on you and your votes to make these right decisions for the town. I would love to see a track myself, but I'm going to rely on your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mike Salinetti, Hazenwood Court. Just wondering where this number came, how you came up with this number and was it put out to bid? Because this all seemed to come up pretty quick.
Madam Superintendent again.
So, because we are still in the, in the phase where we are involved with MSBA and the owner's project manager, they, we still have our resources on site right now and we are taking advantage of that. They led us to an organization called Berkshire Design. They actually, they do, they gave us the quote, their job is to design tracks. They have, we have not gone out to bid. The reason we have not gone out to bid yet, we will go out to bid if the project is approved. So, we can't go out to bid until it is. They gave us a general quote, an approximate quote. Just so you know, the original quote was $650,000. Then, with rising costs, they upped it to $750,000. We really don't anticipate getting to that $900,000. The other thing to note is some of the initial figures are, that we saw in our presentation were based on a million, and we don't know what the, we don't really know what the interest rates are going to be at that time. So, any, any estimates we have made have been fairly conservative estimates, but the company is a reputable company. That is what they do. They, they design tracks. They're working with other districts in the county and they're the ones that gave us that information.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dalton Division Road. I think you should give the taxpayer Dalton a break. This $2 million is burning a hole in the pocket. Your school, you spent $70 million? That's pretty good. You're not satisfied with that? You want more? You want all the money? Turn the money back to the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else? In the back there.
Hello. My name is June Roy Martin, 50 Bird Drive in Dalton. I would love to see the Town of Dalton continue to invest in our youth, in our health, in our community. I have used the track myself. I know numerous people that have used it, and we just have to continue to invest in our future and our health. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Hall is trying to see him, open his pen.
All right. Go ahead. Where?
Thanks, Brittany. Hi, Richard Hall. 164 Greenridge Drive. So, I had a few comments and questions. First of all, this article was moved to be approved by the Finance Committee Chair, but I'm a little bit puzzled why he moved to approve it if his committee last week voted against this. So, that was my first thing.
That's a formality.
Well, it's a formality, but it's an observation because I think it's a fair observation. I'm not against the track, but I think that we probably need to look at other ways of funding it, and it seems to be rushed because we need to, it seems, spend the money before we close the building. But one of my observations was, some time ago, when we were looking at the plans, there was discussions on energy savings, and one of the things was turned down, which was fine, but there was a picture presented to us of solar on the roof. And I walked around the building the other day, there's no solar on the roof. So, my question is, can some of this $2 million... So my question is, can some of this $2 million be used to put solar on the roof, which would help drive down the cost for all taxpayers of creating less energy usage in the building? So I'll sum it up there. While I think we need to definitely look at a track and improvements, we also need to be responsible, and the other question I guess is what happens if we push this vote out till the spring town meeting? Can it come back then? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, Mr. Moderator, agree, ask the superintendent or to respond to that question, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just in response to solar, we do actually have solar in the gym roof. It's probably just not visible to the general public. Another question you had asked was around the timing, which is a good question and a lot of, I've gotten a lot of questions around timing. The reason we're doing it now, one is we didn't really have our complete numbers until a couple of months ago, so we didn't know we were going to be ahead of, or in the black, so to speak. We do have resources at our fingertips right now. The companies and the organizations that we have dealt with have done well by us, we value their expertise, so, and so the timing was right in that respect. The other reason for the timing is because we don't know how much life we have left in this track, so if we move forward now, that resource generally will still be available to our students and our community moving forward. Should we wait? Right now these companies are backed up, and time is of the essence, so should we wait? It's possible that the year and a half, we won't be able to move forward when we want to, which, you know, the other question I'm asked is what happens if it is not approved? And that's possible. If it isn't approved and we can't use our track, what we would do is we would just transport our students to a different track, potentially for practice and then definitely for meets. So the timing was, the time, we decided to move forward, one, because we have some resources right now available to us, and secondly, we wanted to, if at all possible, maintain this resource and not have a period of time where we would have to bring our students outside of our school system. And I can't remember the third, if there was another question.
I think that covers it. I think you got it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
In the back, yes, on the left.
My name is Aaron Udell, I'm a current cross-country coach at Wakona, a former assistant track coach. I ran at the school a number of years. I was a captain of cross-country and track in high school, competed in college, run on a number of different tracks in a number of different states. I just wanted to speak to the track situation in Berkshire County, just so people have information about it. Leslie, Dr. Blake Davis spoke about how we would have to transport our athletes to a different track to use it. We have a sort of dire track situation in Berkshire County. The worst track I can ever remember running on in high school was Hoozick. They have since resurfaced it, it's one of the best tracks in the county. Monument Mount and in Hoozick are currently the best tracks that we have to use. PHS does not have a track, and they frequently come to our track. Taconic did a partial remodeling job of their track, and my understanding is that they ran into a lot of problems because they did it cheaply. They had issues with it and it needed to be resurfaced again, as I understand it. So I think it's important that we do this correctly, that we do it right, and we will run into a problem in this county with using tracks. If we run out of the Wakona track, we're looking at maybe two schools who can host meets. Sometimes we can go to Williams College, it's been really hard to do that in recent years, and it's not like this in other parts of the state, I know that for sure. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Diver.
Just for the record, I would like to thank Ms. Leslie Blake Davis. We have a letter that she sent to the seven towns, I just want to read that into the record. It's regarding maintenance, because it's been a concern or an issue that most towns have raised. Just reading it into the record and then I'll forward it to our town manager to include in minutes. Dear seven-town select board members, I've understandably been asked about the district's intent around track maintenance, should we receive final approval from each town. In effort to fully address these inquiries, I'm outlining below the plan for maintaining a newly constructed track. The intention is to preserve the integrity of the track, given that this space is multi-use. In order to properly maintain the new track and increase its useful lifetime, we plan to implement the following protective, proactive solutions. We'll procure and have on hand a track cover at the gates to protect from wheeled vehicles and heavy cleated foot traffic when crossing the track. We'll also provide for temporary above-ground fencing to ensure the crossing occurs only on the covered areas. The fencing will also be used along the sidelines during events to keep the traffic off the track during these periods. We'll also provide a sign, provide signage, request that the public use the outside lanes of this track in order to minimize wear on the inside lanes. As always, your collaboration with the district is very appreciated. Please let me know if you have any questions. So thank you, Superintendent, for that letter. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Urban.
What arrangements have been made for the long-term costs of maintaining the track by the school, building committee, and the school?
Madam Superintendent again.
Thank you. So currently, we have, we have not been able to get some of this original company that we've been dealing with to give us a firm commitment on how frequently we will need to resurface the track. We know that we will need to resurface the track. What they have recommended to us is that we are as proactive as possible around preserving the current surface. And so what I wrote is really a very proactive approach around preserving the surface. It's very difficult to predict the number of years that we can go. We've been loosely told we're looking at eight to 10 years, and we will have to do another resurface. In terms of inspection, I think we, when we have track meets here and when we have track officials on site, they regularly will update us on the current condition of our track. Our AD, Mr. Jared Shannon, will update us. So we are, we know the condition of our track right now, we've known all along, as you've heard everyone say, that it is, has been in need of repair. And as you know, the original intent was to really preserve the integrity of, it was to really move forward and the building itself was the priority. But right now, what we're probably looking at is every eight to 10 years of resurfacing. At this point, without having a definitive approval, we would be able to fundraise, so we have done that in the past when it was originally resurfaced, we could potentially fundraise. It potentially could come out of our operational budget. We haven't made firm decisions on where that would come from. There is, has been a call, as you've heard from the community, to do some potential fundraising. At that point, we definitely could look at that, and that might be a very good option, given that, given the state of the concerns, and as, we want to be as fiscally responsible as possible.
Thank you. Motion to end debate. Say that again.
Motion to end debate.
Motion to end the debate has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. This is just to end the debate. Any opposed? Thank you. We are going to proceed with secret ballot. Everybody has the ballot that was handed to you when you checked in. Please rip it in half. When you come down to the front on my left... All right, hold on, let the voters tell you.
Two-part, all right? You'll detach it, and I'm going to call you by section, so you're not in a big rush to get here. And you're going to come down this aisle and go back up that. So you're going to detach the ballots that you're voting, go into this box, this is where your vote will go. And the extra piece, this is the discard, and that will be beside it. So the people in this upper section, would you come down this aisle and would you go back up? So everybody that plans to vote from that upper section, over here, come down and around, please.
Yes, vote to fund the track, no vote to not fund it.
Your vote goes there, the other piece goes here, and you're exiting back that way. That way, Michael.
Yep. Is he really very dumb? Oh, he's...
Would the eligible voters from this far section join the line coming down to vote? Would this middle section going around in this direction join the line to come down
If you ask, I will answer.
Would this other section and any standees that were in the aisle in the select board join the line, please? You'll have to come around. The select board will have to go around to join.
Kind one.
If you ask, I will answer. So, if Jeff asks, you can answer.
Would this other section and any standees that were in the aisle in the select board join the line, please? You'll have to come around. The select board will have to go around to join.
Is there anyone that did not vote?
I think Chief Stroh might have been willing to introduce this. So I can see if she's raising her hand after it's moved. Oh, yeah. It was fun talking with the Cub Scouts before. They'd come in and show, like, show it, give them a little talk about... Wow, got to get the table. We do, we do. Because we knew it was going to be...
I think that most of you were here just for this, to vote yes.
Oh, I see.
timely and consistently, because when they get paid several weeks at a time, it's a huge tax penalty. So I appreciate everyone's support for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any further discussion?
Would you like to be sworn in? We're hiring. Come on down. Come on down.
Okay, Article two has been moved and seconded.
Me neither.
It requires a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All those in favor of Article signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you, that passes. Article three, to see if the town will transfer funds from sewer stabilization to project account 932, a sum of money to pay partial costs of addressing sewer system inflow and infiltration and other sewer repairs, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschine.
I move that the town transfer $380,000 from sewer stabilization to project account 932 to pay partial costs of addressing sewer system inflow and infiltration and other sewer repairs.
Second. Article three has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Droschine.
I just wanted to pass along to everyone that our town manager and other financial parts of this organization have, what, what we're doing is, we have a pretty severe infiltration problem in our sewer system, so the, the money that's being used presently will help reduce that infiltration and hopefully reduce the cost going to the city of Pittsfield. That number's a rather large number, I can't quite remember off the top of my head, but the other funds, it's our ARPA funds that came from the American.
Rescue Plan Act.
Rescue Plan. Yeah, but we've, we've got, so we call it ARPA all the time. It's a, it's a federal plan that occurred, I believe, in May, January. The feds approved this money for us to use, and we've chosen to use some of it for the sewer infiltration. It's actually going to keep, all of this will stay off the tax, the tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hutcherson.
Yes, these numbers are based on a study that we had done. There is water seeping into the sewer system, and we're being charged for it by Pittsfield. Their cost went up to almost a million dollars this year, which is why your sewer bills are going up. So, again, we've thought to split the funding between the federal funds and the sewer stabilization fund, which was established for just this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you, that passes. Article four, to see if the town will authorize payment of unpaid bills of the previous fiscal year pursuant to requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 90, Section 34, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droschine.
I move that the town authorize payment from the general stabilization account for payment of two unpaid bills of the previous fiscal year of $25 for New England security and $118 for the UniFirst for carpet cleaning pursuant to the requirements of Mass. General Law 90, Section 34.
Second. Article four has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hutcherson.
I think it's worth emphasizing that everything that we at Town Hall or at the DPW or anywhere in town, anything we spend has to be authorized by town meeting. And typically, a general operating budget is set in May, and sometimes capital expenses are set in, in May or the, or the following month in June. But if we have expenses that occur after your approval for that year, we have to come back to you and get your approval to spend that money, because everything we spend has to be approved in some form by town meeting. And, and I think it's, it's just worth emphasizing that, that, that we don't go spending money on things that we have not brought before you. So, in this case, we just missed, we missed those bills, fairly small, so not a, not a big, specific ask here, but just emphasizing that we, we do look for your authorization for everything we spend.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, I do need nine tenths to pass. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, that passes unanimously. Mr. Droschine.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, have a great evening.